Or water and sewer, if they have any. And actually, the water and sewer items haven't come before these boards in the past. However, the, when we do bonds, we're required to do continuing disclosure. And there has been a change made to that reg, and we now have to include reporting any acquisition deals such as this to the SEC. So, in working with bond council, we determined the best way to do it is to bring it all in the form of one package to the boards and to the town meeting for approval. So, this package includes the town items, which are, I think, public works. There's a Parks and Rec mower, as well as police vehicles. Then also the water and sewer items. The water and sewer items, the funding to pay that portion of the package is in the water and sewer operating budgets. And then, of course, the Board of Ed has their annual technology, as well as a phone system for one of the schools. And the Board of Education has the funding to make their share of the deal's payment. So, it's all more in a package deal this time. We did go out to bid for the rates. I believe the low rate is 2.9 percent.
2.09?
2.09, yes. Okay. And you have the list. And then also, you know, in terms of meeting the criteria for our purchasing policy, there's a worksheet on the items that, you know, were relative to the town side. And actually, water and sewer included on here as well, you know, to demonstrate that to the board. And I think that, that covers it.
Yeah, I have one question.
Sure.
About, so, in getting to that total of 1,126,992, it seems as though we've used the budgeted prices generally and not the bid prices. I mean, there's hardly any difference. I mean, it's, well, it's a $2,000 difference approximately.
Right.
Right. So, is that how usually, when you're going out to, let's say, when you're making these kinds of arrangements, do you usually use that budgeted price value versus...
Yeah, you know what? We, yeah, I mean, and so, I think the difference is so minimal that we'll just, you know...
Keep it as it is.
Keep it as it is. And, you know, like, for example, the, the vehicles that we're getting for the fire marshal and the fire chief, they, they need, you know, there's some additional lights and so on that they'll need. So, we'll be able to use the remaining funds to take care of some, some of those type of expenses.
Yeah, some cushion.
So, it's, it's very, it's very close. We really have it, you know...
Yeah, that would be...
Tuned in this time.
Right. That would be maybe risky. And then, with respect to the police vehicles, I just had a question about how the, the program that, that the police department has to buy their own vehicles, how that works into this, if at all, to these two vehicles.
So, right. So, when we make, when we make, you know, every month when the payments are made, you know, to the financing company, the portion that's related, you know, I allocate it by department.
Sure.
And the portion that's related to the police, we're charging to that source of funds.
Okay. So, similar to why you're doing BOE and water and sewer and so forth?
Correct, yes.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions on the acquisitions that we have before us?
I have many questions.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm gonna start from the bottom of this list. I'm looking at the equipment list that you had handed out. So, starting with the Board of Education. I tried to tie these numbers back to the CIP that the town approved at the annual meeting. And everything ties out, the 40,867 is exactly what was approved on the education CIP. And the next four items, the laptops, interactive boards, Meraki, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right, Meraki access points, and Cisco switches. I am assuming that that is the line item, 2019-2020 technology plan number I just, correct? So, actually, the Board of Ed has come in $20,000 less than what the town approved. Am I reading that correctly? Because if I add up those four numbers, it comes to 200,000. So, you're able to save the town $20,000. Thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Coming up to water sewer. If I add all of those line items together, it is $183,000. So, again, this is coming to us for the first time to be in conformance with the new law that was put in by the SEC. And I understand that that is not going to be in our CIP plan, because they have complete 100% responsibility for principal and interest payments on that debt?
Yes.
That gets rolled in. So, I did have a general question. Is that agreement in writing? Is it a handshake? What if they don't have enough money to pay the debt obligation?
Oh, it's budgeted. It's in their budget.
It's in their budget?
Oh, yes.
So, okay. So, if it's in their budget, and they know what the ratepayers, what the revenues are for the ratepayers, they know that they can afford this every year?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just want to be sure. But there's no written agreement that they are obligated to pay this to the town. So, I guess my question is, what happens if they default?
Well, they're not going to, because I'm going to charge their budgets. I mean, we, we do all, you know, we, we charge the budgets, you know, in, in the finance department. Once we do the deal, and we make all the, you know, everything is squared away, I do an allocation of the total deal. And I charge each department appropriately. We, we do one entry every month. And we take care of doing actually all of the entries. We charge the Board of Education's budget for their share, when water and sewer. Then we charge the CNRE fund for the, for the items related to the police. And then, of course, our general fund accounts.
Do they have a rainy day fund? The Water and Sewer Commission, do they have funds in a rainy day fund?
Well, they budget, they do budget for contingency in their budget.
They do?
Yes.
Okay.
But they also have a sewer assessment fund. I mean, they have, they're also liquid. They can only use it for certain things, not for, not for expense.
Not for operating.
Operating expenses.
You, you see where I'm coming with this, right? If half the town decided to pull up stakes and move, and we're not getting, you know, you know, like, there should be some kind of agreement in place saying, what happens if they default? Not that it's likely. Sure, you budgeted for it, but, you know, catastrophes can happen.
You're absolutely right. Maybe there should be.
Michigan.
I think there'd be a lot more problems if, there'll be bigger problems than their truck payments. Should their, should the system not be able to pay their bills? Be huge problems, like pump stations not getting fueled to pump the, the waste, et cetera. I mean, if we had a real massive breakdown in our sewer department. Perhaps we should put this in writing and make sure the board acknowledged. I'll let you mention it.
Oh, so...
I'm the chairman of the Water and Sewer Commission.
Yes, yes, yes. Full disclosure.
Anna is the, is the finance director of the Water and Sewer Department.
So, I'm, so I'm, I'm asking the right...
Good communication.
I'm asking the right people.
Right. Yeah.
So, are you saying that you're willing to commit to put something in writing, just to protect the town?
I'll ask the commission to put it in writing.
Okay.
That they, they fully acknowledge their obligations in this debt.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. All right. Moving on. Fire marshal Ford F-250, fine, 35,000 in CIP. Same with Flanders Fire Department, the Ford Explorer, that is the chief's vehicle, correct?
Correct.
For 35. Large area mower for Parks and Rec, that was approved, 95,000. Got a few dollars shaved off that, so thank you. Police. These items, I can't find in the CIP.
They're not being paid for by taxpayers.
Okay.
Remember, they're coming from the, the fund that Ann brought up earlier. They're coming from there, outside overtime. The money we're collecting for the rental of vehicles. So, remember, the taxpayers aren't paying for this. So, I'm not sure it should go in the CIP.
It is, it is in the CIP.
But it is in the CIP.
Yeah. I just wanted you to point that out to me, so I could...
I thought it was there.
Tick and tie the numbers, if you don't mind.
So, I think it's on page two, and it's in brown.
It's in brown. It's maybe one.
Under Police Department.
It's a very small print. It's the fourth line under Department 216. This is Police Stations.
What is, I'm sorry, what is the date of the CIP plan that you're looking at?
Well, May 13th.
Okay. So, I'm looking at that. I've got Police Stations, Server Replacement, which we pulled out, which will be funded within...
Right.
Okay. The Waterford Boat.
Yeah.
And then this tiny print.
And the tiny print.
The tiny print.
It's like really tiny.
Should I say that?
You need my, my...
No, it's tiny, tiny. Maybe we should consider two lines next to it.
Capital. Okay. Okay. That's, that's great. Thank you. I didn't, I, I just could not read that. So, that will be one of the CNRE...
Charges.
Accountings that you have for us in August?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Now, moving on. One more question. Public Works. When I add up all of these vehicles, it comes to 374,000? Our CIP plan budgeted 350, from what I can tell?
But the Ford Escape, that's engineering.
It came into a different place.
Department 105.
Yep, got it. All right. So, if I, if I take 1,126,992, and I back out 183 for water and sewer, and I back out, what is it, 170 for those police vehicles?
Uh, 164,409.
It's a little less in the, in the deal.
126, 178.
It's one, that both total, that's 164,409.
Okay.
164, 164,409. That comes to 779,583, which is close to the amount of money identified in other funds on the CIP. So, I'm good, I'm good with that, we bet. Thank you. Nice job.
The one comment I was gonna make, when I looked at Schedule A, is it might be nice to have a column for the funding source. Just, we have it in all different documents, but it might just tie it all back together, so we kinda have a cleaner story. We don't have to ask so many questions that we ask. That was my only comment. John, did you have any?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I have a question.
Then you should ask.
Thanks. So, and obviously, we approved it. For some reason, the roll-off in the crane, I thought we were, we were holding off on the roll-off truck. I thought that was mentioned, but I, like, in my memory, we talked through it, and then we approved it.
Maybe you're remembering the discussion, because we changed departments. We originally funded it in the Public Works Department, and we moved it to the Capital Department. So, maybe you're just thinking a little bit of confusion because of the discussion.
That's the one that actually keyed me on wanting that other column, because we talked about where we're gonna fund it from, whether or not it was within the department, the acquisition program and that. And he wanted it, so he could cut his costs and the offsets and things. So, it's my, I, I think...
It's just in a different place.
He moved it back into the county. And also, his whole budget is based on getting this, the budget's built on top of this.
Josie or no?
Oh.
Is that clear? You're, you're okay?
Yeah. It is, yeah. It is what it is.
It is.
Pretty sure it is.
Anything else? Any other questions? For anybody else? Here or none? Do I hear a motion? It's pretty long.
Let's move, uh, let's see. I think we have to read this.
Yeah, I think you have to resolve that.
Yes, resolved. That, the resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Town of Eastline, Connecticut Authorizing the Execution and Delivery of an Equipment Lease/Purchase Agreement" and Schedules There Too for the Acquisition, Purchase, Financing, and Leasing of Certain Equipment, a Copy of Which is Attached Here Too, is Hereby Adopted and Recommended for Approval by the Legal Voters of the Town at Town Meeting."
I'll second that.
Okay. I got a motion and a second. Do I hear any more conversations about the motion before us? Here or none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so moved, 5-0-0. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, carry overheating oil propane building maintenance, 5,100.
And your summary discusses this need. First of all, we have some leftover money from this, this budget that just ended. What we'd like to do is carry it over, 5,101 dollars, for the very same purpose of heating oil slash propane. We'd like to buy propane tanks with the leftover money. We get better pricing when we go out to bid versus renting propane tanks and then being forced to buy propane from that said company. That's how the system works. We own many of our own propane tanks throughout the town. The new building, the new police building, I think that's what this is gonna be for? Is this the police building?
Not necessarily. It's just in, in general.
In general, we wanna put this into a general account to buy propane tanks, to replace the ones we rent in town. We've been doing this ongoing for a while. This is what we'd like to do with the extra money.
So, what this motion is gonna do is take this money out of last year's 0101, 13,400, 2013, and put it into this year's budget for the same amount. Correct?
Yes.
Correct. And no further purchases or anything until it's gonna come back to us, and you're gonna say, you guys put aside $5,000, now we would like to spend it.
No. So, if the board approves this, we will increase, you know, we're gonna carry it over into the current year's budget, and it becomes available for, you know, for us to spend, you know, as we noted here.
Okay. So, there's gonna be no other action by the board once we approve this?
Correct.
Okay. Other questions?
I just had a, oh, go ahead. Go ahead. John.
Oh. How many tanks do we not own? That we rent, a lease?
Hey, Joe?
Time for your appearance.
It's over seven.
Right on time for a seven o'clock meeting. I apologize so much for assumptions that it's a seven o'clock meeting. So, I had suggested to take this money, to answer your question. Right now, Flanders Firehouse, the house, the, the tank is, it's, it's out of useful life now, right now. I just found out the other day. I didn't know that. But we had to replace that one. That one's owned by the vendor. The new Public Safety Building, all three of those tanks are Osterman. I'm trying to get, I'm trying to bid, as Mr. Anderson said, I'm trying to bid these things out. And as soon as I say it, Spicer says, oh, you can't bid it out. We own the tank. So, if we wanted to, I mean, I look at propane as a commodity, if you wanna bid it out. So, there are a few other things. I believe one of the tanks at the FSB building is still owned by Spicer. Trying to get freed from it, so we could every year just put it out to bid, and whoever has the best bid. But I can't do that right now, because if you own, if they own tanks, then it changes the pricing structure. So, one at FSB, the Flanders Firehouse, and all three tanks at the new Public Safety Building, those are owned by Osterman. If we, if the town owns them, then we control the pricing and we control the bid. Hopefully, that answered your question.
How much do you save by owning your own tanks?
Well, I can't bid it out and award it to one vendor if it's owned by another vendor. So, it's tough to exactly answer that for you.
You don't know. Okay.
It, it could be 20, 30 cents a gallon. I tried to do this with Spicer last, last year, and they balked at the last, I mean, they said, we own this tank and this tank. We had to dig out all our records and to prove that we own them. But you are always gonna get a better, the prices from the other vendors were more expensive, because they were making assumption that they had to change out the tank. You definitely can save the town money.
One more question. Once you own them, what's the life of the tank, before they have to be replaced?
20, 30 years. I mean, that's what most of these tanks, the tank, I believe, at the Public Safety Building is, about 25, 30 years old. The tank at the Flanders Fire, so it's 25, 30 years, a lot like other tanks underground. And we're getting out of the underground storage tank business as best as we can as well.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
And how many tanks will $5,000 buy?
Not many, but it's still $5,000 that I didn't budget to try to do this. I mean, and that's what Anna was saying, is that it would be carried over into next year and say if it costs 8,000 to buy two tanks, 3,000 is part of the budget. So, I don't have to come back to you and, and march and say, I have no money. I'm out, because I'm having a tough winter. I mean, the, the heating is always, is a crapshoot. And last year, we had 5,000 left over. Through pricing, I bid out the fuel. I bid out as best I can the pricing on propane, but I was limited by a few tanks that we didn't own. So, I think it's just a smart move by the town, because it's always a variable amount to roll it into this year and be able to get ahead of ourselves in the, in the ability of future years to bid this stuff out. I don't have the prices exactly what a new tank, it all depends on the size. Like, the Flanders Firehouse is gonna be at 500. If you go down the, the road to the school right now, on the side of the Flanders House, you're gonna see this really ugly temporary tank, 'cause I just found out like three days ago, that that tank is not be able to be used right now. And they rely on that for their generator, and they're cooking now. It's not, 'cause the firehouse is a little different animal, because sometimes it's ambulance money, sometimes it's not. But in this case, they're saying, we have a tank that isn't working anymore. It's unsafe. The vendor will not fill it, 'cause it's unsafe. So, now, I mean, I have to have the generator work at the Flanders Firehouse, so we have, we put in a temporary tank. I'd like it to be our tank. Right now it's theirs.
That, that to me would be the concern, is that not only the maintenance, but the insurance liability and things like that associated with us owning it, as opposed to Spicer, somebody owning it that has the people that can come out and replace a valve or drain the tank and do the things that they have to do for maintenance.
Right.
We're gonna get much better pricing if we own it. And this is the time, I'd like to, I'd like to bid it real soon, 'cause this is the time you buy propane, not in November and December, when everyone's looking for propane.
Okay. And if we start buying tanks, and we find out that there is some unexpected consequences, we can go back to renting tanks?
We could. It's always an option. It's just, I mean, we, we, the town hall tank we own, two of the three tanks at FSB we own. A lot of the water and sewer, which obviously, we're not talking about tonight, but water and sewer, we try to buy all those as well, so that we're in a better position to not have to rely on one vendor.
Other questions?
Are they above-ground tanks or underground tanks?
They're all above-ground, except the Flanders Firehouse one, which is the one that's deemed unsafe. It's in the back side, there's a few bollards there. So, the one they just put in is above-ground. I don't wanna put back in underground. I'm really trying to, as I said, trying to get out of the underground storage tank business.
Right.
So, all the other tanks are above-ground.
Yeah. There's, there's a huge savings when you can buy out your propane. I mean, it's like, it's significant. I, I would almost say more than 30% from, from my experience over the years.
Well, I didn't really get the true luxury of finding those prices last winter, because Spicer kinda held a gun to me, saying that we own three or four of the tanks, and I had to get propane.
Right, right.
So, I did a lot of extensive history to find out that they were not correct. We own the tanks, and now I'm ready with the ammunition to say, we're bidding this out. And we'll work if the Board of Ed has any, and water and sewer, pull all the fuel. It's the whole purpose of a purchasing policy, is pull all the things, and we'll get a better price.
Right. It's just like everything else. It's one thing to buy the tank, it's another thing to pour the pad, to put the tank on top of, to run the new lines. And that's my only, I, but it's, it's a savings in the long run.
Yeah, but they're just replacing Spicer's tanks with our tanks. Those costs shouldn't, those costs should already be...
The pads there.
If the, right, if the pad is there. That's why I was asking which ones are around.
Except at Flanders, there's no pad. I have to still rip it out.
There's no pad there. Yeah.
At, at Flanders, I had to rip the tank out. Oh, by the way, it's got 20% of the fuel in it, so I gotta, you know, rip it out, and, you know, get the gas, get the propane out of there, and then fill the hole and all that.
It's never that simple.
I wish it was. Thank you for, thank you for commenting.
Other questions?
No questions, just some comments regarding this proposal. There's always the option, I didn't hear anybody discuss it, that we could just simply rent tanks from another vendor. So, it's not only a Spicer versus we have to buy. I mean, if we don't like the pricing that one vendor gives us, we can always opt to go to another vendor and have them price it out. If I, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but I think a couple of years ago, we were spending $110,000 or so in propane. And this year, we budgeted 85, and you came in under 85. I think you're doing a fantastic job with the bidding that can be bid, and I appreciate that. But I don't feel comfortable rolling this $5,000 over for this purpose without having more of a cost-benefit analysis brought in front of us. If we were to approve this, this evening, it seems to me like we're already railroading an option and putting one in place for next year. And I don't think that we have enough information to do that. And I would prefer, actually, to see this 5,100 dollars being rolled back into the general balance fund at the end of the year. And I'm assuming that's what hap, would happen, Anna, if we didn't approve that this, this, this evening?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, one of the things with the Public Safety Building, and I understand that's part of a bigger project, they have three 1,000-gallon tanks, and it's with Osterman. So, if I put this, if I put the town pool away, the town, all the other tanks that we own, out to bid and say, we get $1.40 a gallon, and Osterman says it's gonna be $1.90, we're gonna pay $1.90. There's nothing we can do. Osterman owns the tank. So, I'm not sure what you're saying, as far as be able to rent it from someone else. If Osterman owns the tank, I can't put fuel in that unless I get it from Osterman.
Understood. You tell Osterman to come and pick up their tank. You're gonna rent a tank from somebody else.
Is there a third party?
I'm still gonna, well...
Yeah. Then, then the, the other company...
You pay, you pay for it. You pay for it either way.
That's the problem when you own, I have some experience on it. When you don't own, you have zero negotiating power. And they say, this is what you're paying. Sorry.
But, but can you rent the tank from a third party? Can you go to Northeast Rental and say?
Generally, I need a tank. Generally, no.
I, I, it's trying to save money for the town. I mean, we just, we just, we just, we just brought a 30,000 square foot building into that, and I'm trying to save money, 'cause we're about to get it where Osterman's gonna charge us whatever they want. And if I can try to figure out how to change those tanks out now, which is one of the things I did before Monday, I found out about Flanders Firehouse, I could come back with these capital costs and say, I need $20,000 to do tanks, or just pay whatever they think. But I, I'm of the opinion this is gonna save the town dollars. And that's what we're trying to do for the town, the residents, the taxpayers, the boards.
But from my position, you can understand, let's say that the project is going to cost $50,000, you know, in this current fiscal year, and you wanna roll over five out of the 50. If it's, if it's a good and sound argument, it does, we'll approve 50. You know, it's, it's not like we're not gonna approve it, 'cause we didn't move the 5,000 over. I'm for returning the funds and, of excess funds in any department to the taxpayers, and have each project that comes before us evaluated on its own merit.
I agree. I, I mean, I think it's a great idea, and we should do it.
It is a good idea.
But it, it should just be done independently. I mean...
I mean, one, one thing, and I will remind, in the, in the building maintenance budget, I have nothing in for that public safety building. So, I'm not sure which budget, but that, that's why we're trying to save money there, is that's gotta be picked up somewhere, the utility costs.
Other questions or comments? I think the, I think the discussions about whether or not this $5,000 should be transferred to your budget or just a general fund, you're gonna need that other money for the utility costs. You're gonna need it. We know that. We're just saying that we'll move it from the general fund to your fund when there's a comprehensive plan that says, okay, here's my project. I need 20,000 for a tank, and this much for installation and all that other stuff.
And it's a more transparent way of conducting.
I don't, I don't think there's any question that you'd get the money. It's just a question of whether or not it's a, here's $5,000 to put in your any-day fund, but we know you're gonna need more than 5,000. So, we'll, to us, it's $5,000 that goes into the town's, you know, excess funds, and, and we use it how we use it.
I mean, what I'm gonna have to do is bid the propane tank minus certain buildings, and then whatever the vendors, like you're saying, is they just charge me whatever we get on the other buildings, and then we can pull the rest of the stuff that we control, is what we're gonna have to do with the propane.
But $5,000 isn't gonna get you but one tank right now. So, we're saying, come back with your $30,000 proposal, and we'll give you all the tanks or whatever you wanna do.
Out of contingency, because he doesn't have...
Yeah, he's, we're second. Wherever you propose that makes sense, we'll evaluate it at that time.
Right. Right. Maybe it's in the CIP. I mean, you can't...
The 5,000 would help alleviate the Flanders Firehouse. I, I get the understanding, I'm just, I'm just trying to bid these out and pull these things out. I understand that the, the, that the Public Safety's a bigger nugget, as far as the three tanks. But as of two days ago, with this Flanders Firehouse, it'd probably be about $5,000 to, you know, to, to put in a permanent tank that's ours. But I don't have the money to do that, so I'll have to come back and...
But Flanders Firehouse tank is currently rented.
They put one... They put one in just now, just yesterday or two days ago.
That's on rental, but the one prior we had owned?
We, I, I, no, they, they, they owned it.
Right, so it's on them to fix it. That's the one advantage of renting a tank, is when you pay to rent a tank, it's theirs, they own it.
I had to verify that 'cause they, they said we're not putting it into us. What do you wanna do? Do you wanna get your own tank? I, I, I'll verify that.
Right, because that's, that's one of the upsides of why you're paying more money.
When it comes to firehouses, we don't get, we, we don't get too often involved with the firehouses just because a lot of the things, as I said, are picked up by the animal association. I just know that that was thrown at me two days ago. Oh, you gotta replace this tank.
All right, yeah, I would, yeah.
That was my question about the liability. If we own the tank, then we own the maintenance, we own the replacing and things like that. If we rent a tank, then I think whoever we rented from is responsible for maintenance and replacement.
And but you would have to go back to them every year to, to get the fuel.
Understood.
So you can't bid it out.
That's, that's just the trades. So, so I think what you're hearing from us is that we support what you're doing.
Yep.
We would just like to see a comprehensive plan that says, okay, for the town, I need ten tanks, I want three a year for the next three years and then for the fourth year, whatever. And then we'll talk about it then. And I, I think that's probably a, a better way to get, I think we all agree that what you're doing is the right thing. All right, any other conversation about the motion before us?
I, I don't wanna drone on about this, but if we don't own the tank, or if we own the tank of the Flanders Firehouse, he needs money to fix it.
Yeah.
All right, so let us keep using the rental one for now. Figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then he just, I mean, just say, you know, for the Firehouse, I need five thousand dollars for a new tank, just like I asked you last month, and we say, okay, here it is.
Okay.
But for this month, we're saying, we're gonna take this money and put it in our general fund.
Okay.
And then next month, we'll move it over to his budget if necessary.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. So as far as the proposal before us, not the motion, but the proposal, thank you. Is there any more conversation about the proposal before us? Here or none? Do I have a motion?
Did you, uh?
To approve this proposal. Do I have a motion for this proposal?
Do we have to?
If there's no, if there's no motion, there's no motion. I have to ask for one.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion? No motion?
No motion.
Here or none? We'll table this topic and not carry it forward.
So if you table it, then that means you would want it on a subsequent agenda. Is that what you're asking?
What's the other choice? If it's not a motion, if nobody proposes the motion, I'm gonna say that I don't know Robert's rules or law enough to say. If nobody's willing to propose this motion, then it's not a motion.
So I take that back. I'm going to propose that we move to approve a carryover of five thousand one hundred and one dollars from account zero one dash zero one dash one one three dash four hundred dash two one three, heating oil propane, from the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen fiscal year to the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year.
I have a motion before me. Do I have a second? No second?
So I thought that we could.
Yeah, I hear what you're trying to do.
What I'm trying to do is have a second and then we vote on this so that.
You want to defeat it?
Yes. Yes.
You don't have to, you just.
That's what I said.
No action taken.
Yeah, okay, so.
You have a motion, it's not a second, so no action taken.
Either way.
Okay, so this, so we're not obligated to bring this up at a future meeting, is, is what I'm getting at, correct? It's dead.
Would it have gone to the, would it have gone to town, town meeting?
No.
No.
Wouldn't have gone anyway. Hold on.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for your presentation and your work.